What's your name? Hopefully they're sitting over there on that red thing. Very good.
Thank you for joining us in this discussion today. This is a town hall meeting for an opportunity for residents and business owners to join us as we do recommendations of Miami Springs Economic Development. And I'm going to give you a little background. Our city council created this task force over a year ago. And the purpose of this task force didn't be, kind of, one year. We just wanted it to be an ongoing thing, just one year for them to get together and come up with among the job rates of the business economy situation in Miami Springs and come up with recommendations for the council for us to share. One is to put recommendations on what type of businesses we should be attracting to Miami Springs. You know, what do we need, what would we like to have, what will enhance our community? And the other, the other question the council has is to tell us how to help existing businesses thrive. I feel very strongly that our specific vision is not, it's a team that can do well. Where do you have the best limitations by far? And I will, I say this everywhere, of all Miami-Dade County, there is no city that is better situated. We are writing a part of Miami-Dade County, a promise free from Miami International Airport, accessible to all major highways, to I-95, we get on 112 more than I am trying to go a little bit west and then the Palmetto and A-26, a little bit south of the June and we're on A-360, the restway. And for many people that's familiar. So our location in my field, it was really set apart, as you all know, with our community, our charm, our uniqueness, our small-town feel that we continue to build upon, to embrace, to protect, despite everything that's going on around us in Miami-Dade County. And actually, the, the ability that we have to live in small, hometown communities by our historic communities and still have the opportunity to enjoy all of the cultural events, the, the beaches, the Everglades, everything that is being offered throughout Miami-Dade County 20 minutes from us. So there's no better city in the world, there's no better location in the world. And what we do need to do, and I think we all agree, is find a way to enhance the business economic development for our community and enhance it in a way that the vision that continues to maintain our character, our place, our history is so important to us. So with that said, the city council created the Business Economic Development Task Force, and they began meeting in September of 2021. And we each appointed, it was larger than our normal advisory board, we need to claim one person. In this case, we, we had two appointing the task force just to make it, in case there was voting. But the other thing with this economic, Business Economic Development Task Force is that it didn't have to be residents of Miami Springs or the residents of Miami Springs. They also reached outside of Miami Springs. You know, each council member themselves could appoint people that we thought would, would balance out the expertise and the knowledge of the task force. The task force completed, they had their final meeting in November of 2022. And they presented a report to the council in December of 2022. And that's what we're going to be addressing through recommendations. And they want to, to extend my deepest, I know, I speak on the part of all the council members and our staff, our city manager, to the, to the task force members. I know Debbie asked a lot of you, and Mark Trobridge is here, he is the chair of the committee. So I wanted to give a round of applause to each of the members. You're welcome here, and you're on, she was the vice chair. So Mark is the chair and Rhea Capillo is vice chair. And then we have the board members Andrea McRams, board member Jennifer Graham, board member Patrick Majic, board member Charlie Menders, board member Delap Kinkel, board member Francis Fernandez, and board member Jorge. There were some former members who were initially part of the committee and then for reasons they couldn't continue, you know, they advised us that they would be able to continue, as you want to mention that, because they were definitely hardworking and as part of the task force. And it's the late Mike Caffini, who was the president of the meeting council, which passed away last year, Max Mydon, Nahal Pareta, Jean-Marc Tralod, and George Sierra. So please send a round of applause to all of the members. Their knowledge, their vision for the future in our city is what they presented in the report. I do want to say also that this meeting is a town hall meeting, so we don't vote here. This is a discussion, it's an opportunity for council members to discuss the recommendations. This is a workshop that is a town hall meeting because it's very important to us to make sure that as we discuss the recommendations, that we invite our residents and our business owners to be part of the discussion and to provide some terrific input. You're going to put some creative work in. I'll say this, I'll say it before I'll say it again, so many of the best projects in Miami Springs were initiated because a resident had an idea and approached the city, you know, and started saying, you'd like to see this place, not everything can be done, a lot of improvements across the city and a lot of projects have been the result of that, not necessarily us on the council or our residents or business owners coming up with the idea. So we're not going to be voting on here, we're going to be discussing recommendations. We can give some direction to this staff, but any voting on certain issues will be something that would have to be an agenda item on a formal council meeting presented in the future that will have council members put on as an agenda item. I'm going to, the way we have the, the meeting set up is we are going to have a presentation from Mark Trobridge, the chair of the Business and Economic Development Task Force, on summarizing the recommendations. And then our city manager, Lily Malanzo, will make a presentation addressing the recommendations. Okay? And we'll have discussions during the presentation. We were going to, we have it here on the agenda that will hear a couple of comments after. But I want to give you the opportunity, I know not everyone here turns very fresh and you may not want to stay the entire meeting, so I'm going to offer a couple of comments twice. At the beginning of the meeting, for those who want to see at the beginning of the meeting, and at the end of the meeting, for those who wish to speak then. So I'm going to, please limit your comments to two minutes, more than two minutes. And understand that your public comment is to addressing us. This is your opportunity, the one-way, formal communication, you're addressing us, council and world leaders. We don't engage in your public comments and we don't respond because you have an agenda to follow, okay? That you have all of our attention and have the attention of everyone in the room and we'll do these recordings later. Okay, so with that said, let's get started. Let me open it up for public comments. I have a list of three people signed up. And even if you haven't signed up on the list and you find that when you hear these receipts you would like to briefly speak for two minutes or less, or during the meeting later you come today and speak again, and, and we haven't signed up, that's fine. We're all here to discuss it together. So let me get started, I would like to, the first person that we have listed is this, your absent state members, keep your comments to the limit, don't make a public comment. That, you know, that, your two minutes are up, thank you.
Thank you, Mary, good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to congratulate the council, the task force, managers, and everyone. I was here when, when we got this started, I attended several of the meetings, so kudos to everyone. I also want to thank the business owners who participated on the task force, participated a number of ways to get this done. Actually, quick comment, there are many things in the report that I would like to address, but that's okay. But number one, reasons that stood out for me made this report, I liked the idea that recommendation to develop a marketing plan for attracting businesses, supporting businesses that are here, developing a marketing plan to attract new business. Secondly, has to do with the code, lots of things here about code, we're working on those before, we continue to do, we need to prioritize those codes that impact businesses. And the third thing is that, and this may be redundant, is that there are lots of things in this plan. And so it's going to be up to you guys, working staff, to prioritize the items in the recommendations and to operationalize. So thank you very much, I look forward to the rest of the conversation, thank you, Mary. Keep that to mind.
All right, I'm going to take the one. I'll read that. Say that I have a free minute. Good evening, everyone, thank you for holding us down in our meeting. I thank the Economic Task Force for the hard work and what unfortunately, until we deal with the business of that, we can have no competition. Our city manager failed to protect the residents, interrupted residents with a countdown to the developers of one Curtis Parkway, they given them a free ride on appropriate parking. These executives very recently reached a million dollar threshold. City manager finance director William Montal was a major part of the principal violation of judicial enforcement. Billy is finally doing the right thing by leaving the city black. But you don't have to thank my work for it. Consider this statement made by Mayor Mitchell in a meeting last year. Quote, "As negotiations continued with that project, I had concerns with it and didn't think we were negotiating in the best interest of our city and what we could have gotten." So we still cannot trust the process and management going forward when we still have the same city planner and law firm that betrayed the residents still in the land. Nor can we trust management after they gave completely conflicting, disingenuous information why these sales are flying and they're now engaged where we can only be turned up for cover. City managers failed to give a clear and concise explanation for their failure to apply parking fee, even when written city policy statements shall be applied. Because of such disingenuous excuses, I decided to cut to the core of the issue by asking a question. Over the course of several months, I emailed this question five times to the elected council and city attorney for the record. Quote, "If the city had gone to the necessary timely legal process established, you can follow any other appropriate measures necessary, would there have been any legal reasons preventing parking fee from being applied to one Curtis Parkway?" Unquote. I implore the council to acquire an answer for our city attorney, simple question that would provide a much needed baseline on the issue. They have refused to answer the question. City management often chastised residents for not going directly to the source. And yet they refuse to answer a simple question that would establish once and for all, city managers failed to residents while saving the developers. Our city officials did not want the residents to know the truth, that's a cover. We can't respect and trust management as a process going forward when we have the same taxpayer fund as city planner and law firm that betrayed us before and refused accountability. I've stated publicly multiple times that I believe our mayor and council have done a good job, and I thank them for their service, but with responsibility comes accountability. Our city management failed this, refusing the accountable approach. Sadly, our elected officials are enabling the cover-up of the truth, Mayor Mitchell and council. Why are you refusing an answer? Do the right thing and answer the question now, being asked for six, five. Thank you.
The next person, Stephanie, is Mark Del Rosso.
Good evening, thank you for being, for allowing us to have here and host this meeting. I'd like to thank the task force for the work that they put together. I think it's very envisionary and moving towards the future. I'm a twenty-something-year resident of the city, certainly would love to keep the same sense of community and quality of life that we have, but how do we improve our economic opportunities? I think the recommendations that are here are, put us in a really good place to move forward into doing that. I think they need to be prioritized. Thirty-sixth Street, to me, is our biggest priority and the one that we should work steadfast towards, especially because it is really the gateway to our community to the north. With the central business district coming right behind it, and certainly the marketing of these improvements and changing the reputation or the view that's out there from developers or investors in our community. So I thank the task force for their work and thank you all for hosting us very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak before we go to the floor of the business presentation? If you want to sign up. But I want to say that we have an opportunity to hear from residents, and again, our opportunity to follow, we have, and again, you know, we're, we want your ideas, we want your input. These are wonderful recommendations for our city, but obviously, we need to consider all aspects of them and we need to make sure that there's no uninteresting, something that sounds good, so it has to be, everything has to be a force. All right, thank you so much, and let's have Mark.
Well, good evening, everybody. I want to invite the members of the task force who are here to join me up here if they would. Certainly deserve everyone's recognition, we do offer the kind applause as well, and I want to thank mayor, vice mayor, and the council for not only this task at hand, but also giving it something, showing up a lot of, you know, thank you, Jennifer. Not that kind of evening, but I want to say thank you for having faith in us. You had a wonderful representation, not only residents and business owners, but folks outside the community, the business in the community, but also our experts, including the late Mike Caffini. So I'm very happy that many of you already have a chance to kind of look at recommendations, and if you haven't, we're going to go through those. But I thought I'd give you on behalf of our community a little background. So first of all, what an incredible response we had, and so many of you in the room putting pens to paper or going online and filling out a survey. We put together over the course of the first couple of months, a survey that we thought would be helpful to kind of get a current frame of reference and then start talking about the future. And so we had over four hundred, we had four hundred and twenty actual total surveys submitted. Our goal was to keep it at about fifteen questions so that folks wouldn't feel that it was overly cumbersome, and I think by that return, we got some wonderful data. But the questions range from very simple, are you a resident of Miami Springs and so for how long, to do you own a business, are you both, do you own a business and do you live here? What types of issues are you dealing with as a consumer in Miami Springs? And it's no doubt, you know, some of the big ones were, you know, some parking challenges. Of course, we talked about that at a number of meetings. The quality of goods and services, the variety of goods and services that, that we provide are very important as well. You know, locations that you visit, of course, number one, visiting our local restaurants, followed by shopping and groceries especially, and then entertainment, finding things to do individually with your significant other, with your family. But things that people are also looking for were some direct access to things like your gym, hardware store, sporting events, et cetera. And again, all of this is in the report, you can see the good work that all of you have done to provide us that data. We looked at various districts, you didn't just look at the central business district, but you heard Chief Del Rosso talk a little bit about Thirty-sixth Street, you hear about that in the recommendations as well. And we took a lot of input, you know, every single meeting, much like you did here tonight. The committee wanted to hear from community stakeholders, so we had a nice cross-section of each meeting, of residents, chamber of commerce, other individuals. So obviously, I've had a vested interest. Matter of fact, Jennifer, before she joined, our board came and spoke on behalf of her organization, which again, I think was very enlightening. Improvements, again, again, the number one thing is parking, building facades, and again, cleanliness. People want to see it cleaned in downtown as possible, more foliage, more greenery. We're already a beautiful tree city, though obviously folks are looking to maintain that and keep that going forward. Some things that we can continue to work on is the variety of businesses that are here and making sure that we're mitigating some traffic issues that can come from adding new businesses. You know, three things that you'd like to see more in the central business district or restaurants, pharmacy, and retail stores, we're in the top three there. And other improvements, taking us now to Northwest Thirty-sixth Street, you know, top or safety barriers, obviously there's a significant amount of traffic that traverses our city on a daily basis. Things like creating some traffic calming and historic entrance. And actually, since that time, city in partnership with the Association of Real Assets created some monument signage as you come into the city. Other things you'd like to see on Northwest Thirty-sixth Street, again, more restaurants, pharmacy, and retail stores, you can see, I think, some themes there, the top three or four repeating themselves. Would you support a statue of Glenn Curtis? The answer was overwhelmingly yes. Where it should be placed, people think Circle Park. How is the city's weigh-finding signage? Most found it to be pretty adequate. You know, what else could be improved? Things like, some of the signage, I guess, is a little small, and then helping people find the senior center, I had my own challenge. Three types of businesses you'd like to have, we have a top ten list. Number one, restaurants, two, pharmacy, retail stores, and that went all the way down to things like movie theater, gym, fitness, boutique, more clothing stores, ice cream shop. And then three things you'd like most about our city. Of course, you love the safe and quiet nature of it, greenery in the canopy, the small-town feel, and the fact that it is truly a community. Three things that we can improve upon, number one, traffic, right there tied with parking and of course, you know, creating some business variety as well. And then of course, you know, any last comments to give people an opportunity about, they talked about more events, they talked about improving code enforcement, so those are things that, things, you know, when you put a survey like that out, you want to glean as much information. So again, everybody who's here and listening or not here, but participated in the survey on behalf of our task force, thank you so much for giving us, because that was a great place for us to start. And then we started looking at the various testimony that different organizations, individuals, and others are bringing to us. And that allowed us over a period of the next really nine to ten months to come forward with our recommendations. So I'm going to move to that part, because I know that's going to create some additional conversation with here come the city in terms of priorities. But we are an advisory board, a task force, we have a limited lifespan, and we came together to work collectively, and these are the things that we came up with. So the heated discussion in the final report was really kind of one and one A. So these are like almost five, but not quite. So the first one is Northwest Thirty-sixth Street improvements. And if you're looking in the package, you'll see that on page eight dash B was supporting documentation. And right with that, it's continued vigorous support and pursuit of annexation, and that is on page seventeen. Number two, discussion on improving increasing parking in the central business district. Again, if you're looking at the reports, that's page three dash A and the support documentation. We had some wonderful members for our task force who were wonderful about getting into the code, getting that detail and writing up that. I want to thank, of course, our really good friend, the Doug Garcia, I know he's not here tonight, but he was super helpful with that, he liked to get into the details, great business owner here and resident. We got involved with a discussion about joining a national organization called Main Street America. And this was actually a recommendation that Task Force Director George Stettine brought to us, so I'm going to let him speak for a moment about that. I don't think we're going to show the video here, but if you'd like to, I'm sure he'll give you a site so that you can go and look at that. But an opportunity to be engaged with what small cities like we are doing around the country. George?
Well, George, I just want to mention, if you haven't, right over here by the door, we have a copy of a summary of all the recommendations and the survey findings, the survey results that you helped us.
As Mark was saying, the Main Street program is the program that's involved in the National Main Street Center, nonprofit, and they are a very large organization that helps probably over two thousand communities in their realization efforts. And obviously, they have the resources, they have a lot of community leaders that are involved and are willing to help communities like ours get started. So I think it's important that we continue to have that dialogue, because it's something that other communities have gone through, that we can take as the learning curve. So it's important that we get involved, something like this that actually has, I've studied before, because it's not easy, and it takes the whole community to get to find it. So I thought that the National Main Street America would be a great network of resources for this council and future city administration. Thank you.
So continuing on our recommendations, we came up with kind of four and a half, really, really five, almost five and a half, I should say, almost six. The next one is recommendation on public parking. Probably every single meeting, there was some tough conversation about parking, not only in the central business district, but, you know, looking at parking, you know, in the larger context, making it easier for folks to come and shop and dine, preserving parking. Heard from some who, you know, that parking was being intruded upon and it was causing their customers to go elsewhere, and we want to be as protective of that as we can. And then you heard this already, I mean, Mr. Vasco, when we got up, mentioning, you know, creating events and opportunity to bring visitors, engage residents and neighbors, and, you know, cheap people here, like on a night like tonight, and sort of Free Friday, obviously the weekends, the wonderful festivals and other opportunities. But what can we do to build on that and also attract other events that can see our city as a great place to create? To look at this, there were certainly a lot of other recommendations that did rise to the level in terms of individual vote, being the top five, five, five. But what's great about it is that is just the beginning. And you, as the council, have the opportunity to look at these, ask questions, get a lot of wonderful input from our residents, who are so vested, I'm incredibly heartened to look behind us here and see so many wonderful people here who want to hear what's going on, engage, offer their thoughts. I mean, that is really the most incredible process. And so many of them came also and met with us at our task force and gave their thoughts there. So I know that I speak on behalf of the entire group with our appreciation for that. But there are other things, I think Captain is here tonight, he was, you know, focused on a number of issues, and I'm sure he'll be glad to hold court here at some point to share them if they didn't make the top five. Max Mydon, who you mentioned, one of our past members, you know, we had great input from him, there's nobody that's dug into the parking issue more than Max Mydon. One of our folks just said, this cheap car, dumpsters cleaner, it's terrible smell and the way it looks. And I think even those types of things can be immediate fixes, whether it's code enforcement or just, you know, a good update and a reminder and knowledge to, you know, think about your neighbors and your neighborhood as much as you think about your own individual business. So on behalf of our task force here, we would like to extend again a warm thank you to the council, everybody who's here tonight, to the staff that we had the opportunity to work with over the last few months, especially Sandra Duarte, who worked with us through the clerk's office, what a pro. We are not an easy group, whether it's forum issues or coming with lots of pieces of paper and turning it into a document. We got here today with the help of many, starting with the folks who are standing here with me shoulder to shoulder. So on behalf of us, thank you.
There is a very beginning, the ones that there came on later and the ones that I'll be there all, um, fifteen months, whatever, all of you together, for a major city, great and many presentations to thousands. So I want to thank you, and I just wanted to point out what Mark said, this is just the beginning, it's not, if we ask for one year because if not, we'll never get started. So this is the beginning, recommendations that we start looking at, that's So this is the beginning, recommendations that we start looking at, that I know need the end. You know, continually trying to improve our city's opportunities, particularly in this case, our business opportunities. For, you know, like I said, we are a fantastic location, and for the likes of me to don't understand why we don't have more diverse businesses and restaurants and everything here, and just work on that. You know, we can do this together, to make sure that we attract the, what we like to see in our community and what will draw visitors to our community, very important, not just for our residents, each kind of businesses. So the fact that we wanted to, again, because this is my conversation, it's my commitment, is the opportunity for you to be able to see, make a presentation on, you know, addressing these recommendations. If there's anyone you can have a find of, come up and have some commentary that stays two minutes. We're up here.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Brody Malan, I'm a lifelong resident, I'm also a redevelopment planner, I'm the Development and Resilience Officer for the City of Miami Beach. I've worked on a lot of redevelopment plans, I've been very successful in the city of Miami and the city of Miami Beach. And I have, I like a lot of what's in the plan, but I have some concerns specifically with what's related to parking. I saw a recommendation that said for parking requirements, that when an existing building is subdivided for separate uses, that parking shall be required and there's no variance, it shall be allowed respect any building. This will prevent any restaurant from ever opening in Miami Springs. I have a similar issue in the city of Miami Beach, we have a restaurant that wants to expand. They have expanding, they want to expand into a retail area. The retail area will have a parking requirement to change substantially. They can't do that, they can't provide the parking, they can't build the parking. Parking that's in the vicinity is sufficient to handle the parking of that need. So we're now having to create code carve-outs so that they can actually expand their business and be able to open. If we do this, if you have a retail fee, retail requires one space per three hundred square feet, restaurant requires one space per one hundred square feet, a restaurant would have to, a thousand square foot restaurant would have to provide seven new parking spaces. Where are they going to do that? If we do have a fee, the fees in Miami Beach are forty thousand dollars per space, nobody has ever paid it. The commission is constantly creating exemptions and carve-outs for people because nobody can afford to pay that fee, and it prevents businesses from opening. So we have created lots of districts where no parking is required, and it has been very successful. It's been a successful tool for restoring preservation and preserving the character of it. If somebody did want to build parking in our downtown, they would have to demolish one of the existing buildings in order to put a parking lot, and the parking lot would ruin the character of our community. So I urge you to really consider this, a lot of cities are moving towards removing parking requirements. Parking requirements are based on planning studies from the nineteen seventies that are not relevant today. Our situation is different, a lot of people are walking, they use Uber, they're biking, a lot of people are using the off-parks to get around. And so, we should really reconsider parking requirements for our downtown if we want the businesses to open, because we will not get a single restaurant from these parking. As far as the issues with parking, I've never seen it, I go there, I bike there, I walk there, I'm there every day. I've never gotten issued parking, so I don't see it. There are a few areas where there are issues parking, like generally, if you walk across, you can get to where you need to go. Most successful Main Streets, the parking is in the rear and you walk to where you need to go. And Doral does, Miracle Mile, Downtown Doral, Doral City Place, Coconut Grove, Downtown Miami, Brick Hill, Lincoln Road. You park in the rear and you walk to where you need to go, that's the type of Main Street. Areas where you park right in front of the business to walk right inside, that's Kendall, that's not charming, that's parking lots. We want a community that has a lot of charm, we don't want a community that's just parking lots. So I saw some recommendations on turning the median of Westwood Drive into parking. I think that would be a huge mistake, that median isn't many. People buy things, not cars, and creating a Main Street that's for the public to be able to enjoy is what we need. Perhaps that walkway needs to be improved and better connected to the residential community, and there's a big gap in the walkway on Westwood Drive, that needs to be improved. The internet, there needs to be interconnectedness between the blocks of that walkway to improve activity, and so that's something that should be done. We do have a lot of available parking, it's just underutilized. A lot of it's in private hands, so the city should work with private property owners, provide incentives to encourage them to make their private property public parking. There's plenty of parking behind the building where Cozy Corner is, that whole building is closed by five o'clock. The parking to the rear is empty. There's parking behind, next, behind the post office, it's empty at night. But it's, it looks dangerous, it's not well lit, so that parking should, the lighting should be improved. There should be improved signage in order to get there, so that we can get better utilization of the resources that we have and not look for these new resources that are unnecessary, because we're just not utilizing our resources properly. As far as the wider sidewalks, better trees, all that is great stuff. For, as far as Thirty-Sixth Street recommendations, there was, I agree with most of it, except one that's called for allowing the setback to be used for parking, that's terrible for urban design. But again, that creates a situation where you look like Campbell, I would not do that. However, the parking, there's recommendations a lot for grocery stores, that would be outstanding. I would also add restaurants to the list, it's illegal to have a standalone restaurant on Thirty-Sixth Street. Change that, in addition to the recommendations, a lot of grocery stores. I think that's it.
And yes, but this is an example of, and I always say, we need to tap into the expertise that we have in our community. We have so many accomplished, really exceptional professionals in our community that help us all the time. And Brody is one of the sources, I can say, I know, I reach out to him, manage a few businesses. And he is, what is your name again, Miami Beach?
Development and Resiliency Officer.
And to reach out and have numerous times on just getting input on, you know, Miami Beach, you know, what it is. So, thank you. I know you have, and so do William, can help you, you're in good form.
There was one more in the trolley, and I think the city should look at Freebie, which is a service that's being provided in several cities, it's an on-demand service that picks up residents, brings them to the downtown or wherever they want to go. So the city should, should look at that, a lot of cities have it here. Miami Beach uses it, Antura, there's a lot of cities that are, that are using that service for your residents that you call them on your phone or with an app, come pick you up, take you downtown, please, wherever you want to go. And so, that's my last suggestion.
Okay, is there anyone else that comes to? I think someone may be sure, maybe that you addressed, that you don't believe you're aware of.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So I just want to make one comment. I appreciate a lot of the comments, you know, G A, and I agree with most of them. I will want to push back on one, G A, in particular, about the fact that I'm sorry.
But again, for not responding to those.
Well, I want to make a comment about the time that they loved it. But I did that, I'm not a business owner in Miami Springs, but I'm a resident, long term. And I do, do believe that there is a parking issue. All the places that there was mentioned just a few minutes ago, you know, whether it's Downtown Doral, Lincoln Road, anywhere on the Gables, they all have parking garages. There's, you know, plenty of parks, we don't have that here. And, you know, if you're a business owner, why don't we just ask business owners? Certainly Miles complains about, you know, people parking in their parking lot. You have the sushi sake that just opened up, illegally parking in the bank parking lot. If that gets enforced, that's going to, you know, if they start towing people out of there. I think there is a parking problem. I know for myself, when I go to the businesses, whether it's going to eat, to Jeff's, to the Barrio Bell, you know, I'm a owner, I just lived this week, and I'm going around at eight o'clock at night, can't find, he's got a bunch of people at his restaurant, and I couldn't find any parking. So that's the one, that's the only one issue comment that I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Is there anyone else? We're going to now have the city a presentation, and I wanted to say, our city manager, who we want to make a presentation, unfortunately.
I am going to do my best to fill very big shoes. But the manager, myself, and our city planner, Chris High, has met with these recommendations five months ago. Over them, and I personally like to thank the task force for all of the work that you did. It was very detailed, and as Mr. Malan said, there are various recommendations here that are well thought out, and the city really appreciates it, and to Mayor's point, we have a lot of resources here in the city, and it's great to see the resident and interested stakeholder involvement. So I'm sorry for having my back to you all, but want to make sure that we present. My name is Heidi Carey, I serve as the city attorney. So Mayor and Council, what the manager, Mr. Hatch, myself, had planned on for this evening was to focus first on the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street improvements. And the reason for that is most of those involve zoning code changes. So we wanted to identify, the reports from the task force went through various changes that they would recommend. And I think overall, Chris, please let me know if I, if I misstate anything, but I think overall, we had a lot of agreement with, from the staff side and the administration side, there was a lot of agreement with many of the recommendations. So with that, Mayor and Council, I'm happy to go through each recommendation, and then what I think would be really beneficial is to get your feedback and some direction on each of these so that then we can start working and get more information so that we can take the next step. So the first recommendation, these start, for those of you following along, these are on page nine of the task force's book, or report, rather. And this is, so they provide some background explaining, I'm just going to read this to give some context. So the task force explains, the mild interest of investors in Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street may be directly linked to outdated and over-restricted zoning codes. These zoning, restricted zoning codes are easy to access online and may be acted as a deterrent to investors eliminating the opportunity for Miami Springs to be presented as a new project for Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street. The following sections of the zoning code are, the task force believes, must be revised in times of the essence. The task force also believes that several departments in the city must have a sales approach. That's a little bit separate from the zoning code changes, but the task force indicated that they would like to see the city marketed as a product and have staff ready to attend to these, focusing on closing the deal. So the first excerpt from this. So the first excerpt is, I believe, from section one fifty dash one sixty-four of the code. Don't quote me on that code section, but the excerpt provides the purpose of the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street district. And it says that currently in our code, it's to provide for a successful commercial, for successful commercial operations that enhance the district, provide architectural features that support and store Miami Springs design standards, and enhance overall commercial revitalization. The task force's recommendation is to revise the sentence that includes language Historic Miami Springs Design Standards. And from the administration's perspective, the administration is in agreement with removing that from the code. So the reasoning that the task force gave for removing that is that the current architectural features and current developments in the Central Business District are no longer those of the past. For example, Quizzle style. Therefore, the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street District should be in no obligation to support Historic Miami Springs Design Standards. So that, we're going to say is zoning code change number one, and that is one that staff or administration agreed with. I don't know if the council wants me to continue going and then come back, or if you want to take each one as it comes up.
Okay. And we have one microphone, if anyone wants the microphone, or if that would leave the people in the back. Here's the council, can you hear us? Okay, let's hope not, we have the microphone around. So let me just get, to understand, the recommendation is to remove the reference to our historical architecture for?
For Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street, to simply strike the language that says Historic Miami Springs Design Standards. So in that section of the code, the code provides what the purpose of Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street district should be. So that, from a planning perspective, when the planner and the community is looking at what can we do for Thirty-Sixth Street, this is giving you your framework. You know this any better than I do, Mayor, but I propagate it.
Anyway, I think, and part of what goes in the report is that, anybody can look up one, right? And it's, I think, any developer looking at where they're looking to invest. They see that there are architectural designs that have to comply with Quizzle style on Thirty-Sixth Street. Like, I feel like the most historic part of our city, obviously, is the oldest part of the city, is the circle, and what is currently the Central Business District. But I think that, I agree that on a lot of Thirty-Sixth Street business corridors, I think that that's a limitation to any other. Right, it's going to, it's going to be a deterrent to somebody, because it's like, oh wow, I got to hold something, but I have to comply with, they may not even go to the city and ask to whether it's being enforced or not. So I have no real.
I was here when we enacted this, and I have absolutely no problem striking this, because I do understand that Thirty-Sixth Street doesn't have any Quizzle style at all. And honestly, there has been, the only, only things that have gone up since we enacted this have been hotels. And most hotels aren't, have a Quizzle style. I do have one question, if anybody can see, can answer. Has, has anybody come up and said anything about this before? And looking, when they're looking to rebuild, have any, have any of those builders come up and said, we don't, we can't do this, and because of that, we would never build the city?
Sure.
This is Chris Fire, City Planner.
Basically, every developer that comes to us with an interest in developing on Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street raises the two concerns, that they don't want to or can't build in the streamlined modern style or the Quizzle style. Those are the two that are required. By the way, streamlined modern and Quizzle are utterly incompatible with one another. So to have a corridor that has a mix of those two, it just would never work. It's the first thing they mentioned to me. And the second is the free standing prohibition, that you can't build a Whole Foods alone. You can't have that, you can't have a Walgreens, that's not allowed, you can't have a restaurant. So if there were a popular restaurant that wanted to be made and built, they're not allowed to do that.
Thank you for that. That answered the question, and that pretty much solidifies the answer to get rid of. If we're having issues, and those issues have been brought up, then yes, we need to do something about it. And as far as the single-story building, like a restaurant like that, one of the reasons why we decided to put that in the code was to try to maximize the, what goes in there. To put a single-story building on Thirty-Sixth Street where we can go four stories, five stories, whatever it may be, I think it was over an hour, five. We felt at the time that it was underutilizing area. Now, I will ask this again, have we had questions about a single-story building being built there and saying?
Yes, but in the day, the internet, one of the things that concerned me is people do their own research, find those requirements, and don't go forward. They don't know enough to contact us and say, hey, I've read your code, or if you've this, I have a problem with your architectural style. I have a problem with your one-story, you know, I've got a client that wants to do fill-in-the-blank, a one-story building. So a lot of that, we lose, we don't capture, because it never comes to us, because they, they self-analyze. But yes, it's a real issue. By the way, we share your. By the way, we share your concern. It's always troubling to me when you have a large parcel and have a developer come along and leave 100,000 square foot of real estate behind to just do their one-story, but they can do the market with five stories of office, or whatever. It's certainly desirable, and I understand the intention. You just can't force it. You can't force people to do that. If they want to come in and they want to do a market, fine. And I see some examples from previous experience, where we wanted big buildings, and they built three one-story buildings. 10 years later, they're three 18-story buildings. So they, you know, they, they call them taxpayers. They pay the taxes while you have this one-story restaurant in there. But that's not your ultimate goal, that you're really going to be developed in a much more significant fashion. So if that's where the market is, and it's only for, by the way, a lot of your nationals, they don't want to be below other tenants, or next to other tenants. They don't want to share the storefront, they don't want to share that space, they want to be standard. And if that's what they want, and that's where the market's at now, great. Eight years from now, 10 years from now, they come back and say, hey, that's how that happened. It's always, well, typically, slow adding progress. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, this discussion is, I'm just going to point one respect. That is, there's been several municipalities in both Miami Dade and Broward County that want to make cookie cutter approach, maybe, I mean, where they kind of bash each other around. One shot, you know what I mean? We're not like that. We have the principality of Huelva based on our history. And there are a few of those, and that's okay. But the modern and the Huelva, whatever you can add, you should never ban it. I've always felt that myself, personally, I agree. But those that, I think, that went on over on the business, they're, like moving house spaces, they're building that, that's a pal pop kind of, right? I mean, it's not a real mother. I guess, I think the heart of it
Oh, yeah, yeah. Christian O'Leary. Right, definitely, that's a remedy. We never got anywhere near the critical mass to continue that on. A little fool for five or 10 years, well, we got some of those built. Most of them have since been torn down or badly altered. But it never, it never caught away from like the Mediterranean did in Coral Gables or Surf Stiles. In Miami Beach, really, everyone would know it. Arteco and more in the single-family, Mediterranean Revival. And the roots are deep in that, and they still hold dear to that. We've never got, I didn't even get close.
I am in support of what you said earlier relative to banning that.
I mean, we're not really enforcing this ordinance to the good ones. I mean, we don't have to strike it out, perhaps just to put, have support that is local, or maybe trying to sign, but it's not Miami Dade. But at the end of the day, I think anybody who's kind of, I mean, developers kind of coming in and so much rights for like, that's a big space, depending on its highest level of view. So you never know, I mean, you don't want to shut it down. But again, like, I read a letter, the mayor's community today, nobody gets to build these historical buildings there as you think. But it's the same, maybe a very artistic development, and if they want it, or raise some sort of commercial style of design, they're going to do it. And between the modern and not the modern, maybe they want this building to stay out. And like, oh, we don't agree that the building is very cheap. You never know. So you can't strike it out, where you can just, it's a little kind of value of, can't support since the historical Miami Springs.
This is actually a segue. I realized on my version, I had a task force version, and the manager's presentation here has, as we had discussed, a recommendation which is on the screen. And this was, we identified it as recommendation number three. But subsection G relates to, so we're talking about the purpose of the code. The this code section of G talks about the requirements. And if you look, read along, the general requirements outlined in this section are minimum aesthetic standards for all site development, buildings, structures, remodeling, and renovations for the district. And then subsection two of that goes on to provide the requirements. So it's not just that the purpose is that it supports these historic Miami Springs design standards. Here's where it becomes an actual requirement. So this dictates that it is required that all new site development, structures, buildings, remodeling, and renovations show proper architectural design concept and be appropriate to their surroundings. But then goes on to say, "All remodeling and renovation of existing buildings and structures within the district shall, shall exhibit the Huelva mission revival or streamlined depression modern architectural design standards. All new construction shall exhibit streamlined depression modern architectural design standards." So if you're remodeling and renovating, then you have to do Huelva or streamlined. And if it's a new construction, then you have to do streamlined slash depression. So here is another place where the task force made a recommendation to remove these standards from the code, and the administration and staff was in agreement with this. So I'm hearing consensus on this point, so I think we can move on to the next.
Yes, and I, to Chris's point, I do agree that nowadays developers and the scouts that are looking for things, they don't bother so much to reach out there, they just look, see, and expect to be troubled and move on. The only thing you might consider, and then you could be straighter, is perhaps, something that was called, modern, architectural, modern, mid-century modern, is that
I'm going to deliver it to the
Streamlined modern or depression modern is
Or Huelva mission style.
Follow some of the Artecos.
Or, not fire, something like that, you know, to just give them the
Striking it doesn't hurt, because you can still do it, it doesn't say you can't do the streamlined or the Huelva. It doesn't mandate it. For me, that seems to do it.
I was thinking, and I'm, not for my, when we're together, I mean, to give someone who's just familiar with our city and is looking to perhaps, you know, considering building a CBS, or Walgreens, or, you know, something in all the departments, and just the idea that, you know, this is encouraged or desirable and required, makes them think, oh, I guess the city has, you know, some sort of history. But again, I'm not the one that, I think the more important thing is to be real clear that, you know, that we want them to consider us.
Mayor, as you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, what we're doing tonight with public benefit is we're receiving your feedback on these recommendations. We're not taking any formal action tonight. And for the public benefit, I want you to, I want everyone to understand that ultimately, the city, we will pow-wow, we will look at what do we need to do to effectuate these changes. These are zoning code changes, for the most part, requires an ordinance. Requires a hearing before the council, then it requires a hearing before yourself as the local planning agency, as we did the other evening, and then once again, a third hearing for second reading prior to adoption. So there are many opportunities for public engagement on this. So I don't want anyone to walk away from here tonight thinking that every kind of stuff.
I think that, and again, I know Mr. Madonna made this point, and it's really, really important to understand that it's our responsibility, the council and the city, to consider, whenever we are considering any kind of action, obviously, there are intended consequences that we want from that. But it's really our responsibility to consider all of the possible unintended consequences that might occur from that. And I think it's a long time to be, because it's not just unintended consequences that are, you know, relevant to the city, unintended consequences being granted by other, other regulations, they're related to other things that you have to
So moving on to the next page of the summary, which is on the screen here in the hall. The task force's recommendation here is on height of buildings. So this section of the district regulations provides currently, "Structures that are located within 150 feet from adjoining residential districts shall not exceed four stories or a height of 55 feet." Goes on to, another subsection that says, "Structures or portions of structures located more than 150 feet from adjoining residential districts shall not exceed a height of 120 feet." So the task force's remarks on this were that limiting the height of the building would restrict the return on investment of the investor, which goes to, I think, our city planner's point, especially in today's high-tech market, which may mark the site an area of bad location. Which I think was also going to Mayor Mitchell's point about, you know, places like CBS, maybe not so much with the height, but a location like CBS is going to look at the code and say, this might not, this is probably not the location for us based on just your feelings. So from the administration side, we were in agreement overall, but that on the 150-foot distance, that we retained that, but changed the residential district to single-family homes. Because the residential districts that are, there's nothing to identify which residential districts are being talked about. So we wanted to make clear that it's single-family residential. And the reasoning from the administration side is that it's limited to single-family homes, because we do have areas where the adjoining district has multifamily buildings. So Chris, you want to speak to this one a little bit more, from the technical perspective?
Yes, there's a couple of instances that we ran into where the proximity of the property to residential was causing that not to happen. So we started to look at some of the things, that the roadblocks were perhaps fully, if the break is between the Northwest 36th Street, is south side of Oakwood and north of Oakwood is single-family home, so you would start there. But we have some properties that are south of Oakwood, multifamily, that really take a large chunk out of the development sites because of that proximity to the multifamily. And our feeling is, from single-family to 120 is not acceptable. But from single-family to something in between, and then to your 120, it is acceptable. So we think we should change that. So we're talking just about the distance separation from multifamily residential.
All right, thank you, Mike. While you're, you're a distant higher life board, all that, our audience also, that you're saying we want to keep a break residential and single-family, I mean, single-family homes and multifamily homes, that we want to make sure that it's not a big difference, although it's very tall, residential multifamily building, and then we go to single-family, it should be a gradual, perhaps, to the condo, to the condo in each week.
Yeah, it's exactly.
It's a gradual difference.
Basically, we're keeping the distance separation from single-family, that's not going to change. If you're within 100 feet of single-family residential, you then are limited to 40, four stories and 50 feet. But we are suggesting that if we change that, if it's multifamily residential, that that distance separation not be applied, and you could start your 15-story, 12-story building, 120s, but building the whole park, you're not cutting off that northern chunk, that we would do to respect single.
And again, we're talking about Northwest 36th, so everyone's there. We are talking about, we're simply, it's all limited.
And the district, unfortunately, we don't have a map here with us, but the district really does run the Northwest 36th Street corridor, and may, maybe not even a full block in. In some places, but it's a very limited, you know, in its north-south configuration. It is a very limited scope. So on subsection two of that, the, I'm sorry.
So for example, do you see that a multifamily property, which is a lot of 100 feet away from a single-family building, it would be one level, right? A single-family, a multifamily housing would be one level, correct? No?
No.
I'm thinking, I, we don't have an instance, I think, of, like, South Drive, where we have, like, an apartment building.
Yes.
Okay, where you have a house, and you have, I don't know how many stories that would be, like, three stories? Okay, I'll be getting that, in the right
No, what we're saying is, if you are within 150 feet of that multifamily, that the, you do not lower the height of the building. That only occurs when you are abutting single-family residential. So this is, this is an opportunity to maintain that protection that we have for single-family homes from high-rise structures, mid-rise structures. But we would take that protection away from the multifamily, from the three-story condos and the rental apartment chains. It's quite damaging to development.
This is for everybody out here. One of the other things we're also putting up against, is we do have, we're writing the airport. So that's just for everybody to know, we can't go 12, 20 stories without being cognizant of the requirements.
Chris, what is our restriction on 140 feet or 40 there?
Well, at 120 feet, we do not, this is my recollection, we do not lift a number of stories. Normally, it's presented in stories and feet, we only do feet. You're probably talking 10 stories, you need at least 10 feet per floor, and you typically want a taller fourth place. Current development trends are, you go in, they walk that high, picture the old grand banking hall kind of thing. A dramatic space, might be a restaurant, might be a bank, might be anything, but that typical first floor is usually quite a bit more 16, 18 feet than 10. So I'm going to say safely 10 feet. Excuse me, 10 stories.
Right, I agree. So I think, I wanted, okay, so you see the example of property on South Drive, that is permanent building, I know it's 10 stories. But if that owner wanted to build 10 stories, would he be in his right to put 10 stories next to that?
Although, surely not, because he's probably in the multifamily zoning district, not in the, not in the Northwest 36th Street.
Which is restricted to whom?
Three stories. And all residential buildings, of all of our cities, are limited to three stories with a residential. They're all limited.
So this is, again, another good segue, and I did see this in the task force's report, but it bears noting that you do have your charter section 1.04 sub six, which provides that any building that includes more than two residential dwelling units shall not exceed three stories, any maximum of 40 feet in height. So to the extent that we would add to the list of permitted uses on our 36th Street, a mixed-use building incorporating residences and retail, et cetera, this provision would limit the council's ability, it was prohibited. Let me not say prohibited. It would severely impact any investor's interest in building. The height restriction, you know, has to be set for you in 120. So charter changes, as you know, need to be presented to the voters at an election. So we have an election coming up in April. These ones, there is nothing about height on that election. But this is something that we can explore further, depending on where we vote.
I, yeah.
I'm sorry, I will speak up.
I'm sorry, I will speak up. Um, so, so any, any amendment to the charter requires going to the electorate, residents of the city, in order to be effectuated. So unlike our city code of ordinances, the city council cannot unilaterally make charter changes. They have to approve a resolution, like we did recently, saying we would like to present these revisions to our charter to the public, to our electorate, and then the voters vote to change the charter, not the council, okay? So I don't want anyone to get scared or concerned that the council's changing the charter, the council's not doing that. It is up to the residents to make that decision. So with that, on, on this point, I, I don't want to move on to the next one, it sounds like there's a number.
Thank you. So I think that's an important point that I want to make sure that we are all on the same page, because it did come up in the task force report, but it was a recommendation on the part of the city, and I think it's something that is limiting us in terms of our regulations needed to make up. So along through the Sixth Street, if you've got more than two residential units, so if you want to do like a mixture like retail, and then residential units, there's a cap, you can't go above three stories, right? And I think that, that, like, to the point from, like, counter to the law, that they didn't want, like, a one-story pharmacy, they didn't want to limit people along Northwest Six Streets. The investment, if you've got more than two units that are residential, and yet you've got hotels that are, that are many floors, I, I think that that's a very limiting factor. I don't think we should be having that three-story, because I think that makes those kinds of mixed-use developments.
My only concern was the building, I have an issue with that change because of the course. My issue would be a permanent building that are being built more than a single-family home. I remember walking, my first time around, I was like, I need to turn, maybe up to South Drive. But I think that, that building is pretty far in, it's not, it's not really on the jurisdiction for me, it's inside. Should it be now again?
Yeah, that's part of that, that multi-family buffer that we were just discussing.
And there's actually another section in, in the task force's recommendations that talks about setbacks, so we will get to that point, because it is an important point. You do want to have buffering between districts, and you don't want to impact, per se, you know, a, a single-family home. It's sort of like having the two-story home that's overlooking the one-story, sometimes, you know, you want further setbacks to lessen the impact. So that is addressed a little later. So I will note this one as, as there's at least consensus right now on the administration and task force's remarks here. The next one is subsection C of the, of the zoning district code. This is mixed-use development of residential uses, up to twenty dwelling units per acre, as limited as the city charter on upper floors above retail, office, and related use. Buildings that include residential uses must be built on the northern half of the property if the property is adjacent to Northwest Thirty-Six Street. And the task force, their, their remarks are that the building should be allowed to be built with more flexibility, a possibility of variance or otherwise. The administration's take on this was in agreement, changing the requirement that residential uses be built on the northern half of the property and allow it adjacent to Northwest Thirty-Six Street. I think that, respectfully, Mr. Mellon, I think this goes to your, the point that you raised. You do see a trend nowadays to bring the buildings closer to the street and have the parking in the rear. With this type of, of regulation, you're setting the building closer, actually, if I have my directions correct, right, you're setting the, the building, these buildings closer to your residential area as opposed to letting them come out to the street. So that was a, a recommendation that the, the task force and the administration are in agreement with. In addition, the staff, as I just mentioned, would recommend that the charter requirement that any building containing two or more residential units be limited to three stories not apply to the Northwest Thirty-Six Street or Abraham Trax district. Abraham Trax is just east of Le June and Forty-second Avenue. So as noted here, this would require a charter amendment and a vote of the electorate. When, when drafting these charter amendments, we can be, we can tailor them to the community's wishes. So if there was an interest in leaving the charter language as is, but excluding the Northwest Thirty-Six Street district, or the Abraham district, or both, or any other district, but retaining that limitation elsewhere, we could do that. If you wanted to get rid of the limitation altogether, you could also do that. There's all sorts of ways to address this. And I don't think we're prepared to get into that level of detail tonight, but I just wanted to say that thought out there.
I just like to comment where the audience, if you hear, mentioned Abraham Trax for, if you're unfamiliar, I don't know why.
Uh, basically, we weren't providing uh, a restaurant. But what we wanted, what we, I guess, what we wanted to say was that if you are building an office building, and you wanted to put a restaurant in there, which isn't what the main building is for, uh, you can do that. Even though it's expressly not allowed as a standalone. So if you wanted to build a restaurant, but building the restaurant inside of a, of a, of, of the office building, you can do that. And it may be worded or badly, but I think that's.
This, this, and, and there's a cross-reference, it's, it's not great here, so I am looking at the code on my phone, so excuse the informality. But the following, there's a, the section of the code that's referenced here, one sixty-four, B two D, actually says, "The following uses are permitted within a building with other permitted uses," so you have to do it with something else. But if you want to do it on its own, you can't. Restaurants. You can't have a standalone restaurant. You can't have a medical and veterinary clinic, and boarding for veterinary persons. You can't have a clinical lab, you can't have travel agencies. You can't have an automobile rental agency. Retail stores, that was a big one that I think the task force identified. If you wanted any retail store, uh, for example, I don't know, make it cold, just standalone. You can't do that unless it's connected to something else where the principal use is permitted. So this is very restrictive, and I think that what the task force was going with here is, open it up. Make it, you know, let the market come to you, and I, I, I know I've heard of having grocery stores, more grocery stores, and more retail, and, and, um, I think at some point somebody mentioned that there's no pharmacies that are really, um, between the city and, I think, Lejeune, to the south, you have to go to like Eighth Street. So you have to track quite a bit if you're, if you're heading south. Um, so those are the sorts of things that this, uh, recommendation addresses. And so, um, we, we might need to also make a change to this permitted use section, and, and what's permitted, and what's not, and what can be standalone and what's not.
Kind of, I guess you could call it that, um, some of the, um, uh, you know, labs and different things. I have no problem with moving forward and presenting something, you know, if, um, I first present something for review for future meetings. I want to make it clear that I think that this is where, um, you know, we should be involved in this decision.
So.
And, and I'm not disagreeing with that, but I think, um, I think they can go ahead and give us a couple of options for us to choose from and, and we can go on, vote on that later on. But you hear, uh, obviously they hear our, our, what, what words, what our feelings are and they would need that to arrange important any recommendations that, that help out here. I mean, even if it just fell out, it's okay. If your business is way, way out of what each business is on, then you have to cut, okay? But if it's similar, the administration made a, 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 um, decision on this and, and then when they're reading that, they're saying, okay, my business is close enough, all I have to do is go and talk to the administration. But then, uh, they can come up with, with wording for us to look at.
And like I said earlier, there's nothing, we're, we're, nothing is being written about here.
I agree, and, and it's, uh, the point that I'd like to think about when we review that is that again, what it comes from. You can phrase something in a certain way. However, some of us might say, yeah, but what I'm concerned with is even though it's being presented as this, they can also be doing, you know, this is a certain issue, something that's in. That opportunity for us to discuss this and as council and go on to for these unique situations, I think is an important responsibility of, you know.
And to, to your point, I, I think, um, somebody having to discuss, we talked about this, too, but, um, we can also look at the list of permitted uses and, and get much more specific and updated language.
I just said, we have key here, here. I think there's a lot of opportunity in that. And maybe we can add some other things, but there's, you know, how, what's the wording for, you know, businesses and, uh, pieces that are more consistent with what happens nowadays.
So with that, uh, we'll, we'll come back with something on this one. Um, the next one is at the bottom of the screen. Uh, the recommendation here from the task force was to propose deceleration lanes in certain areas of Northwest 36th Street in order to allow investors to build more beautiful buildings and save your passage, uh, provide for safer passing for incoming and outgoing traffic facilities. Um, on this one, I know that the, uh, recommendation from the administration is on the next page, but this is the, Northwest 36th Street is an F dot, um, an F dot road. So as in other jurisdictions, when you have to deal with F dots and, and other agencies, we'd have to confer with them and see what would be approved. So I think this one requires a little more, um, discussion with that agency. So, uh, there's, there's no comments on that, that's, we'll move on to the next one. Okay, this next one. What was that? The F dot one? The deceleration? Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, so I think this is, uh, what Councilwoman Bravo, uh, was discussing. So there's a section in the Northwest 36th Street regulations that provides that the setback addresses, among other things, setback, lot coverage and floor area. Um, and the, the task force's recommendation was strictly relating to minimum setbacks. Provide, which currently provide that, um, the section A provides that front yard setbacks shall be a minimum and 10 feet from the property line, again, grammar could be improved here. Uh, no off-street parking shall be allowed between the property line and the building. Um, so this was something that the administration, uh, the task force recommended removal. The administration also agreed with the removal of the 10-foot setback. However, recommended that the prohibition of no off-street parking between the property line and the building be retained. Um, Chris, do you want to add any remarks on that?
Well, we, I mean, we have a conflict, there's one section that doesn't be at zero, which is our preference. There's another section that doesn't be a minimum of 10 feet. Um, so my recommendation is that we get rid of the 10-foot and then just have the zero setback that holds that line with all the great shopping streets that, that's been, been, that Elliot talked about. Uh, but the other thing is whether we do zero or 10, the issue of putting parking in front of it is moot because it couldn't possibly fit. It's, it's, it's a moot point. But, um, yeah, but we, we think those buildings should, should hold that line, it's really important.
Absolutely, I'm saying that because this is for, kind of reporting if it's not, I'm video speaking. Chris, would it be possible if they should be doing? Either, if they have a 10-foot setback, if you're going into the government, can we have parking within the building?
Oh, sure, just, just not in that, not at gray parking. So that's a good reason, for example, well, I guess we're doing, I'm going to say you could have it on the ground floor with the building pulled up all the way. But we're, we require that liner of retail shops, retail office along there anyway. So while there could be parking on the front, it, it, there could be parking on the ground floor towards the front. It could not be at that front, at that setback. It would have to be some distance back to provide that, that activity liner that we're always looking for.
So would you suggest that we have interior parking or internal parking for anything?
Internal, every planner will sort of agree, tell me that. I'd park it with the parking behind, like Elliot approached, put it in a parking garage, do something a little bit decorative to it. Um, but absolutely be mine or in the garage, let the building speak to it.
You have the other page on your expertise, um, just to say, I think you have any new plans?
I, I agree with that. I, I, I agree with that, that the, the, that the parking should be to the rear. However, there is an issue with pedestrians on 36th Street and I think there should be a setback at least at the ground level. And then maybe over the ground level, the building could come to zero. And that there'd be a requirement that that 10-foot setback be used to widen the sidewalk. And that's something the city of Miami does in new construction, um, something that we do in Miami Beach now to, to try to get wider sidewalks because you see a lot of tourists walking on 36th Street and those sidewalks. And so we should use the private property to get that.
There's a lot of work, we want to have that, and, um, to, you know, to, to direct the end still on, you know, the, 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 um, you know, and, um, increasing the cycle. Um, they, yeah, uh, they've already, the lanes that they want very good streets are already not, again, they've already minimized in their area, but 10, 11 feet or something. So there's no wiggle room there for them to extend, um, the sidewalks at all. Um, it has to be, they have.
And by the way, that's, that's exactly what we did, if you remember the, we'll leave office buildings, the one on the two buildings that straddled the alley and then joined themselves up above. The building is built to the property line on the upper level, the ground floor that 10 feet back in, with a colonnade that is then added to the public sidewalks. We get something akin to 18, perhaps 20 feet of walkway. And we did the same thing with the town center where the building on the upper floor is that zero of that colonnade set it in, it's a tuck-in on that building. We'll always be looking for that for new construction.
So the idea is going forward, as new construction is built, will increase that walkability, will try to, and, you know, eventually whenever, you know, that'll be more than the session.
There's, there's, there's someone in the audience, there's a few people in the audience who is like, let me mark, I don't know if you want to open it up now?
Thank you, Council, right now, and then I'll leave it out for comments. Oh, okay, thank you, all right. So let's go ahead and, um, again, if anyone wants to speak from the audience, speak a minute. Um, you know, in two seconds. Okay, I just want to suggest that you keep the 10 feet and that you've got a requirement for landscaping these sides to walkability. If we're a true city and we're adding more concrete and high rises to 36th Street, let's make it three, okay? If you want my, um, when you speak, just say your name, go back, um, again.
Kathy Doyle, 2085 Miami Springs, San Francisco.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Longwood, Carlos Longwood. I live just two blocks away here. I thank you for completing the sidewalks, it's now safe. I should go up Apache to Westward on this side. Um, we now have a new sidewalk for just a few days.
Yay.
Westward, it was around the shed and it was an oversight. But anyhow, I wanted to speak to, uh, also, thank you, I, I'm all gratitude, I really am. There's something, um, in my experience, but, um, there was a machine, a grinder that was, uh, grinding, uh, the sidewalk where they moved, okay? Um, right around the corner on the left, on the same block, okay, or two Melaleuca. Take them down. I only have two minutes, so if you, the Miami Herald has written about Melaleuca. Navarres for years. And, and the county is taking them there, they are an invasive species, the most invasive ever. It's brought from Australia in order to drain the swamp a century ago. Take the Melaleuca down. The, 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 these are the trees that, where the roots are so invasive and then they lift their sides. When you replace a side, put the line rock number two and compact. Compact and then with the concrete sidewalk and they last long. Two blocks to the right on Westward at 1200 Westward, I planted something for a dear friend, one who also restored her home, as Mary Lou and I did, Pam and Rob. And, uh, Maxie Beck, um, she should get an award for what she did to that house, it's just incredible. You all know it, it's the Seahorse House, right here on Iroquois and Westward. And anyhow, I planted something that Fairchild introduced not too long ago and it's a Cassia Bicriana. Uh, I did it four years ago, uh, now, in February, the dead of winter. We enjoy the best weather in all 50 states, right people? And, uh, it should be flowering now, it's our harbinger of springtime. And it's more beautiful than the Chilena. Again, it's Cassia Bicriana, please add it to the list of trees that you can plant here. Also, when, here in winter, we don't have, uh, the, the Babu, I want to address sanitation with restaurants. I'm sorry, I'll, I'll try to break it up.
We are, we are, we are speaking of the, the topic, well, you still have two minutes, no matter what you want to talk about.
On the restaurant.
No, I'm saying, yes, you can. Yes, sir, is there anyone else that wants to interrupt me for two minutes? Get a little bit of the rest and, and, do I need the, the name?
The, the 10-foot setback was, that, that reason for pedestrian safety. That's why we did it, so that if any new, uh, building, there's a tear down, we wanted to, to give a, a buffer there for, for pedestrians' safety. Um, I, I, I'm all fine with if we go on the second floor, going zero lot, as long as we do have, uh, some kind of a buffer there. Because I, I honestly think that that sidewalk is very, very unsafe. When you, when you have, especially where the light poles are, you have to go around the light pole, you're almost walking on the street somewhere. So I, I, I really do think that, uh, some sort of a buffer, uh, on the, on the ground floor should be required. So we can, you know, work on that.
And I just want to mention, um, years ago, this is probably from eight, more years ago that I reached out, F dot, out that, before that was lying, was, uh, next. They did look at Northwest 36th Street again and gave me that information, sidewalks are small, they can make them, because they need to expand roads, the lanes are small, they can make them, so, that's many lanes, you know? They're trying to solve, when they did that through codes to improve lanes and the traffic. And it is, actually, I think Northwest 36th Street back then, it's very back then, it's much better, but that causes unintended consequences of, you know, pedestrian, they can only be a walkable place. So one of the things I just wanted to mention that they adjusted and even, that, that the issue is that fairway drive, that was called behind it, that they suggested making that pedestrian zone. Um, so I'm throwing it out there as, and that could be incorporated in, like we're talking about going forward in council, by little, as new construction is being built to incorporate some more of the, of the, the, the. Anyone else for this? I need you.
Okay, we are only, we're, we're reaching the end on, on voting recommendations. Um, the next one is also as part of this subsection on still, also on Northwest 36th Street. The task force's recommendation relating to architectural elements such as canopy to report for shares may approach five feet into the front setback. Um, the task force's recommendation was to be able to allow that these types of elements, canopy, port share, uh, go to the property line. And the administration was in agreement with that, I think, um, I've seen this be updated in other jurisdictions as well. The idea being that you want to provide some sort of coverage for people who are coming in off the sidewalk to be able to, or even to the sidewalk and have some coverage from the elements, uh, there. And I'm sure there are other planning functions that this might serve and architectural, but I'll leave that to, those are more creative than I am. So I'll move on to the next one. Um.
Thanks.
On the next one, the subsection is that any on-site pedestrian bike path must have decorative pavers. The, um, the task force recommended removal of that regulation. The administration was in agreement with removing the pavers, however, uh, there was, we, we had some discussion as to, um, whether it should be decorative finishes, finishes, such as stamped concrete or some other type, type of, of, also.
Decorative finish?
Finish, thank you, that's the word. We're trying to finish this tonight. Um, you know, there are some cities that have requirements for what the sidewalks should look like and that's just part of their code. We don't have that, we're just requiring decorative pavers currently. So we, there's, there's a lot that could be done with something like this and I think we can explore it a little further.
I mean, decorative pavers to me, and these, like permeable papers seem to be the, you know, the ease of using a pedestrian or, or bike path.
I, I think this one definitely.
I mean, anything that we named walkable, rideable, you know, should be, you know, first consideration that needs to do is, right, a, 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 have their, private even in there. It's funny when we go through it, and I'm going to explain to everyone, we're a hundred-year-old city. You know, things have been added in the 30s, in the 40s, in the 50s, in the 60s, you know, and then something like that in 30s was updated in 50s or 60s. So the more you scratch beneath the surface sometimes, um, you know, you're surprised what you find in. And some newer cities, you can see that whole drought, plenty of holes, the closure can be pretty uptick, you know? So just keep that in mind, you're surprised about things that we, and, okay. Do you have any, no, they probably already mentioned it.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, tell me.
Hey, I just wanted to make a comment, I'm just trying to be an ideal person here. Uh, you know, I think this is a break, we're now, we're moving away from the code issues and, and, for, and all we're looking for, talk, uh, great. Given the time and also that we have limited microphones and, so do you think that maybe for this section, we could chunk it up, like we were, you know, have Heidi review, like, to review them and then we hold our compliments and, for anything that stands out from those two groups?
So, do the man. Um, to that point, one of the things that we had discussed was, um, there's a lot to digest here.
Coming up is depth.
Yeah, this is all very depth and I think that, um, while the CBD's parking is, is zoning related, um, it might deserve, I think topics two through five, you were thinking could be addressed in separate workshops dedicated to, um.
I think that that, um, is probably, um, a good idea, um, that, because, um, it is, this is going to, um, require a lot of time, um, but.
Can I just, just a week after the parking analysis comes back for this particular area?
That's my, that's my, but I do want, if, if I need, you could, as a, as a question here, um, give a summary of, you know, what was the deal? Uh, okay, I, 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 I don't know. You know, whatever you mean. This is, and I, I think, I always do, let's do that.
Uh, workshop part two of the task force's recommendations and the agenda would cite out that it's the only point, uh, on these recommendations and the staff, um, the staff analysis on it. And then we can, we can specifically discuss these items, um, because we, we have spent a, a good amount of time talking about like really dense material. Um, and it's been a very good discussion, but it is, it, 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 it does, it does require a, a good amount of brain power. Um, so we, we had thought of splitting it up into workshops and we can announce it, I think, to, um, our assistant city manager's point, Ms. Romero. Um, the city, as you know, um, is engaging a company to do a parking analysis and that analysis should be done in it's a total of eight months, but within that analysis, we, we are going to require a minimum of two workshops for that parking analysis to be done with that company. And, and so maybe that's the time we can discuss it too.
That the parking is steady, they're coming back with grants for the parking study. Majority of that funding, program that we, for the parking study, was initiated based on, uh, discussions. We did have a final report from the city council, developed task force, but based on the ongoing discussion that parking is definitely going to be, you know, and it's part of the final recommendation that, that concerns about parking, so we've initiated a plan for grants, we've completed and now, that's one.
Thank you. Um, and just to, to kind of dovetail with, with the conversation about parking, because under that, uh, there was a media outlet, uh, that, that wrote about, you know, why, why are you having a parking study and, 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 like, there is a consensus or whether or not there's a parking problem. Usually, even the Miami Council sometimes, people disagree, we had two different people taking the movie over, they're both, we're like, there isn't people, no. So, um, the reason we're having the parking study is, if I say that, so that we can make informed decisions and, and act, and I think the other, the other part about the parking study is that, uh, I really, really wish that one critical pathway, uh, would be fitted by the time I get in, and I don't know that that's going to happen. Um, but obviously, I'm sure that there's, there's ways that they can predict the parking studies before, right? But I think that the important thing is not, we're not even anxious about if there's a parking problem now. Uh, the, the important, the parking study is like, what's it going to look like after the, that property goes online? And once we get all the, you know, restaurants on the bottom floor, you know, you have, you have a big restaurant down there on, right? Right, so, um, it's not binary of do we have a parking or do we not. To capture, and that's with the purpose of the study, uh, to capture like what is current reality and, uh, and what, what can we expect? Uh, because I think that, uh, is important. Uh, and I think the other thing is when we establish the parking fee for any new development, uh, I have, at the time when we were talking about what to charge for the parking fee, uh, we, we talked about like, well, if, if, they, we're going to charge them for 10 spaces, 10 spaces out of how many that we actually have available. And I don't think that there's consensus on how many spaces we have, particularly given where the, so. It's very important, I think, that we have, and outside for studying the parking, I have a question of what exactly is the parameters of the study? Is it, is it not the entire suburb of the street, right? Does it include the entire overway, gateway overway?
It's the gateway overway.
Okay, but, uh, okay, so.
So it goes down to Westward Drive, the two blocks of Westward Drive and then, uh, goes along Canal Street, all along Canal Street, both ends from, uh, the apartment buildings on, on Nakota, all the way down to the Alcoa Bridge.
And does that include the parking behind Cozy Park?
Yes.
Is that going to be part of this? I know, so like, I know the overway is so square, like where Prudential is, but it doesn't include various, various corners in, that's not part of the, of the, so.
But the parking does include that area. The parking analysis does, will exclude that area, yes. If you look on our website, W W W, Miami Springs dash F L dot gov, website.
All right, so I, I, I think that's very, very important, parking study, so that we can be informed, uh, as we, as first development come in, so that we can find solutions and, and be a little more proactive about the action when many decisions about, uh, development come in, so that we can get a handle, uh, get ahead of parking, uh, regardless of what you think is an issue now.
I remember that we talked earlier on, when we did the changes to the gateway, where, right now we don't have a more, more, you know, area. Right now we need to start, and if you want to go business and there's more to do, they not need to get their own individual parking then. Remember, and they want to stop there, that's what that was, I think we had to change, well, we, the city would pick uh, a company to provide the parking then, we not do that change? So, so right now, somebody, okay, we're not like on hold. We're, we're going to have a parking tent that we decided on, that was off of the grant, but right now we're not holding back any of this, a study, a study. But what we passed was a business owner to come right now and do a restaurant or do whatever they want to do and they will have to, irregardless of the grant or their, of the study that we're coming out with, they have to get their own study. So right there, I will depend, so please, I will, so please, I will, I will, I will, okay?
Yeah, I mean, my, my, you, you know, property, right? They did a parking study, uh, and Chris, correct me, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, the theater part of property developer, they got, pretty, and, and, and and, and, uh, a media outlet also said like, oh, it was there, you know, they picked their own, continues to be perfect. Right, so, so, uh, I think what we did when we changed the ordinance, uh, Heidi, is that we said that moving forward, we were going to pick, uh, and then they would have to like pay the city in trouble, right? Okay, so then, don't, don't, right, and hey, we do not want to do that, okay? I don't want to put you on the spot if you're not sure. Yeah.
And, uh, I, I think, I think that we said in the foundation and, um, so that going forward, when we request the study, um, you know, there'll be a request study and we also, um, even say that we want to do, that means. That we'll go into that, part of the review that, right, okay. So, uh, with that said, let me open it up again, uh, so what we're doing, just to clarify, is tonight, um, and when we asked the task force, we asked them to look at. Uh so what we're doing, just to clarify, is tonight, um and when we asked the task force, we asked them to look at, uh remember again, we asked them to give us input to things, we asked the task force, give us recommendations as to what kinds of businesses we need to attract or we should be attracting Miami Springs. I don't think we need more help, probably going to be more U V, whatever I'd say, as you know, that there's a lot of businesses that we residents like to have and it's good for our community to draw visitors to our area. So we asked them for that for information on what kind of businesses we, the city should be trying to attract. And the other thing is of what we need to do recommendations to the city as to what the city and the council can do to make existing businesses thrive and do really, really well. You know, um so those are the two purposes of the task force. They provided recommendations and there's actually two distinct business areas. Um one is the Northwest 36th Quarter, which is what we've been discussing tonight. The other one is um more related to and included a lot of concerns about um or actually viewpoints about parking in what we call our central business district, which is the circle, the Western Drive, the um gateway overlay area and that kind of area. So um what we'll do is we'll end the meeting tonight, um first and open it up again for public comments or anyone. Because remember, you know, your information to us is we're not responding to you, but hearing it. And it helps us form opinions and and we can get caught to, you know, to um to, you know, what we probably need to do. So what we'll do is we'll end this tonight here and then we'll form another workshop after, and maybe this is after we have the parking study done. Obviously, that's going to buy a lot of information for no reason rough to, you know, uh make any discussion on this when we don't know what the laws of the parking study are. Um I didn't want to say many compliments ahead, um this, but um but it doesn't matter if things, you know, were done ten years ago. Things change, um but the worst is right now, situation right now. And a parking study tells us what the situation is right now. But also what they do, these professionals have the ability to look forward, to look forward for the next ten years, like, you know, I think sometimes it's hard to predict, you know, we're going to have twenty five years from now. They can certainly look forward ten, fifteen, twenty years ahead and the parking study gives us track knowledge and uh foresight so that we can make decisions not based on the, you know, what we're hearing right now. Residents, um but what we just have in, that's kind of our responsibility too. Uh a big part, I think, is looking for the future and making sure that, you know, we're also, uh seeing the council that we've done best we can to the city right now, but also go for a council to reach. So with that said, is there anyone, okay, is there anyone else that wants to speak one last time? Please go forward and state your name. George, two minutes.
Uh in reference to the parking, wait, wait for my mic.
State your name.
George Santin, Miami Springs resident. In reference to the parking study, please. That uh if they have to, they can do this from their desktop. This is the major mistake. They need to, we need to delay this parking study, that town center. There's open bids right now to close this deal. That made the possibility of this thing actually getting started soon probably remote. So I think to start the parking study without those major businesses open is a mistake. In reference to the physical part of their study. Those guys cannot do that in that study, talk to stakeholders, need to come to the businesses. Just do it when they actually are open, if not, we're going to miss it again. That's the only way it's going to be accurate. Thank you.
Ken Burreller. My name is Max Maham and Mr. Santin, I agree a hundred percent with what he says. And it's just not the town center, look at every other building within a two block radius, the, the square across the street. Everything's being redeveloped. Wait till it gets done, I think you're going to waste your time. Uh the only thing I want to mention and, and I spent a lot of time, hundreds of hours when I was involved with this uh project. I read the Gateway Overlay District, it's only a few pages, I read it probably thirty times. And there's things in there I disagree with and what's done is done, that's, we all have to live with it. But I do think there are some wrongs we can correct and there's one wrong that I could see corrected. And that's, and, and, and this man right here, I haven't, I've never met you, but I was very impressed with that the board of zoning and planning, forty minutes. And everything that you brought up in there about uh parking and shared parking and this, I don't know how long that meeting lasted, I watched a YouTube video, it seemed like it was a few hours and a hundred minutes. It was many pages. And what surprised me is the planning and zoning board came up with all these recommendations for staff to consider. At the end of the meeting, they approved staff's recommendations. But what happened is staff didn't, I didn't see whether they ever took it, any other recommendations that you made and everybody else. Two weeks later, once the council owns approved and all is done. But one of the things that kind of came up in the parking study, well, that's verbatim. One thing that kind of came up is shared parking. And I read that you said in there about shared parking and it's basically dead for that. When, when I read them to God, during the day, all the vendors can use the parking in the business owners can use the parking in the garage to park. And likewise, at night, when the businesses are closed, residents can use city parking for the residents to park. But the big problem is this development, even though the parking study was prepared by the developer to include shared parking, the parking garage is exclusive for the residents own, that's wrong. And it's the developer that made that misrepresentation, so hold them accountable. Don't let them take the garage, don't let them assign parking spaces to the tenant like you recommended and put public parking signs for city. Put the big vertical sign, public parking, and allow residents to use it after it was represented by the developer. And I say that now because we're running out of time. As soon as you started issuing a certificate of occupancy, you don't have any legacy with the developer. So that's just my recommendation. Do something now before it's too late.
Right, yes, sir, and I, and I realize and um.
I have a quick question, because I wonder if you would. Is, is there a, is this a timeline, I wish the parking study has to be done?
To answer your question, yes. Um but I can go back, isn't it, it's S dot grant, so there is a deadline. Um that deadline is practically approached, approaching, I think it's August or September of this year. So what I can do is I can go back to that S dot and we'll just have to ask for an extension. And within our extension request, we would explain why we're asking for this extension because of all of these uh particular developments that are undergoing major construction and it would uh severely impact uh the analysis as a whole.
And, and, and Mayor, I, I think there's consensus that we should direct staff to do that because I know that the initial intent of parking study was to, hey, let's take a picture now once town center is over. The town center isn't open, there's any way that we can lay that. Uh I, I'd rather, I'd rather have a spend done that doesn't have to reject uh something that isn't there yet.
It must be like this.
Um I think that's a good idea, I think one of the um, one of the issues there. S dot Florida Department of Transportation is in, but perhaps. What happens is we just don't get. Yeah, like we might as well second you. They're on their own, so um if can be, I think the next town we need to have that explanation. Or you don't need to eat, you don't have that. It's just, but I think, and I think the other um thing was we kept hearing from that property that they were to be ready in three months, in four months, in five months, you know, six months and when it would be full, obviously the pandemic has hit and several other, you know, conditions and all this. And maybe it's always happening with the government, since they're, I can say, but I think we don't need to do that.
If anybody has a P and L transformer in their backyard, that would help with the project.
You have to get all transformed.
They are delayed right now with that project because FCNL has sent all of their major transformers up to the west coast and they have not, FCNL has not been able to give them a date certain for a transformer. So they're running on temporary power until they can give this transformer, you know.
You're talking about the developers.
Yes, they're, they're there.
All right, um, anything else? May I ask anyone to speak, okay, so then?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, Administration and City Attorney and Chairman Probridge. As a past test member, I want to thank everybody involved in taking these recommendations that we all made together as a team. And you are listening, the City Attorney is involved, Administration is involved and I'm very glad to see this happen. However, I do agree with Dr. Walter Prejean, George Santin and Max Maham. This study, because of what the assistant, the city manager, Tavi said, and the FPL being involved with not providing the transformers, it's a good way to request a delay in the parking study because it is fruitless to do this study in projections for the future. Because that town center is going to create a massive problem and congestion in parking as to what we have now. Already two businesses, Si Amos and the new sushi place is having issues. I was at Twist Bank and they told me the door trucks can come at any time, morning, noon and night. It's the weekends possibly. So they're going to lose business because the customers are not going to be afraid about that. So I appreciate that, one more question. Who is doing this parking study? I hope you stand the box in charge of the hands because that's what the previous study was. It's like the FAA, they've got the uh people who made those extreme machines to do their study. It has to be independent, is the parking study an independent company?
Um just go ahead and use your time.
Okay, that, that was my last question, yeah, I just wanted to make sure. And one more thing you mentioned about the, see, uh I've been a resident here for fifty-three years. Airline pilot forty-seven with United Airlines. Thirty-sixth Street is east and west, as we all know, the runways are east and west. You might want to check with the FAA on that because when I, the runways are the same direction as the street, I don't think there's a massive restriction on buildings because airplanes take off further away from Thirty-sixth Street on both directions and there is a diagonal runway one-two and that's in a different direction also. So you might want to check into that if you have a bad city, who's on building, I guess my two minutes is up, is that it?
Okay, anyone else? Right, so thank you so much for repeating in the turn. Um briefly again, we are here, there, officially in a long, good, free.